Welcome to the first hearing of the 33rd Legislature of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. Welcome to everyone coming into the hearing today. This will be a packed session with lots of interesting bills, and I look forward to hearing your testimony. Thanks for being here. And to everyone online, thanks for being here as well. It is Tuesday, January 28th. It is 2:00 PM here in Conference Room 325. My name is David Tarnas. I'm Chair of the Committee, and Vice Chair Mahina Poi Poi is joining me. And we have Representative Diamond Garcia here, and Representative Garner Shimizu as well. The other members are watching from their offices, and they'll join us presently. For today, I would request that in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, if you could limit your testimony to two minutes, I'll ask you to wrap up at that point. And I'm a gentle facilitator, but I will try to make sure that we move along to get through all of the bills and all the testimony. Please, if you're on Zoom, keep yourself muted and your video off while you're waiting to testify and after your testimony is complete. And use the Zoom chat function only to communicate with the technical staff. Don't send me a message because I won't get it. So just if you're needing any technical assistance, you can use the chat function for that. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, just rejoin the meeting when you can, and I'll try to fit you in so that you can provide your testimony when you rejoin the hearing. If there is a network failure, a power failure in the building here, and we have to reschedule the hearing, then we will post appropriate notice so everybody knows what's going to happen. If you're testifying by Zoom, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images because that kicks us off of YouTube. And so we don't want to do that. So just use a background of your own making, not something trademarked or copyrighted. And please conduct yourself with aloha, no profanity or uncivil behavior. And as I like to say, it's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. We can do our job best when we help each other. Okay, so that's the advice on how to conduct ourselves. I want to welcome Representative Amy Peruso joining us, and the others will join us presently. Okay, let's get started. Our first bill on the agenda today, House Bill 131 relating to research. This bill allows agencies to disclose government records to researchers for certain research purposes. Basically, this bill will compel the Office of Information Practices to promulgate rules to establish some uniform rules for providing information and their records to researchers. So that will be the first bill, and I want to welcome Representative Della Albaladi as well. Okay, first up, we have Office of Information Practices. Welcome, Ms. Amarino. You want to use the rostrum? That way, we can see you and hear you, and your mic is there and everything. So please introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members. My name is Carlotta Amarino. I am the Director at the Office of Information Practices, and I stand on our very brief testimony in support of this bill, which would help researchers to obtain access to government records for research purposes. And I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I'm going to take the opportunity now, you can stay up there a few moments. I always ask the testifiers to explain the highlights of their testimony and not just say, "I stand on your testimony." And you've done that, and I appreciate that. What I try to do is avoid using any acronyms or technical jargon. I really would like all the members here and the public to understand what we're doing, and so that's why I try to make sure we don't use any technical jargon. And I'd like to have just a summary of your highlights of your testimony. So if you have anything more you want to add in terms of highlights, please proceed.
Sure. Chapter 92-F Hawaii Revised Statutes. The UIPA, or Uniform Information Practices Act, governs access to state and county records in Hawaii, and there are occasions when researchers would like to obtain access to non-public information for research purposes. So this bill would allow OIP to clearly adopt rules to facilitate that for them.
Thank you. And OIP is the Office of Information Practices. And it's hard not to use acronyms. I get it. But I'll be gentle about that.
Sorry, Chair.
Thank you very much. No apology needed. Thank you very much, Director. Next, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources. Please join us. Introduce yourself, please.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members. I'm Puah Ayu from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, DLNR. We provided comments. Our comments were that there are basically a very limited number of reasons that a government agency can decline to provide what are basically public records. And we think all of those are reasonable. So we don't actually think that this bill is necessary because we do think that sometimes the government needs to have the opportunity to not give records. For example, if they're drafts. The other thing is that we're very concerned that if we decline, because the language says "may," "may provide," which means you also may not provide. So if we decline to provide those records, we would probably have to go through a very long and costly process. So we asked for additional funding if this bill passes. And I think what those were the, oh, and we asked for a change in definition because we noted that the media was included. And media is, if the media is a nonprofit, then they should fall under the nonprofit group, and you shouldn't need them because I believe the bill is focused on nonprofit, specific types of agencies. So those are the highlights. I'll be available if you have questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Human Services. I refer members to the written testimony from DHS. Next, we have testimony from the University of Hawaii System in opposition, expressing concerns about the bill. Next, we have testimony in support from the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. I will refer members to the written testimony in support. Next, we have testimony in support from the Public First Law Center, Mr. Ben Krebs on Zoom. Mr. Krebs, are you there? Please proceed.
I am. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for introducing this bill to the introducers, and also thank you, Chair, for setting this bill for hearing. Again, my name is Ben Krebs. I'm at the Public First Law Center. You have our written testimony and strong support of this bill. And I'd like to address maybe a little bit of confusion that I noted in some of the comments in the testimony, particularly DNLR and DHS. So this bill, it simply clarifies existing rulemaking authority for OIP. And in OIP's testimony, they explain why they believe this bill is necessary in order for them to enact rules. But this is just about rulemaking authority and conferring that authority on OIP. So it doesn't actually eliminate any of the exemptions. That was one of the DLNR concerns. And it doesn't create any new disclosure requirements. It's just a rulemaking authorization. And like I noted, the Office of Information Practices, who administers the public records law, does support this bill. And so basically, the idea is to help get data, government data, in the hands of folks that can use that data and tell us what it means. And it's, you know, the first step in promoting, you know, more data-driven government. A lot of times, government has the data, but not always the resources and expertise to use that data. And again, you know, there are some legitimate concerns raised in the agency testimony and in their comments, but really what those show is that there's details to be worked out in the rulemaking process. And that's exactly what the rulemaking process is. So they can bring those concerns, members of the public can bring those concerns, and we can have a much more detailed conversation about the rules. But if you don't pass this bill, that process doesn't even begin. So to me, this is like planting a tree. The best time to plant it was 20 years ago, but the second-best time is today. So we thank you for your support of this bill, and we appreciate your consideration of our testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony in support from Grassroots Institute of Hawaii and Hawaii Data Collaborative, both in support. And we have testimony in support from two individuals and testimony in opposition from one individual. That one individual in opposition is Kanani Kupuniay, who's a kupuna in my district. I always need to listen to my kupuna. So we've been communicating all day, and I provided her with additional information, and I think she's okay. She's not testifying via Zoom. Is there anyone else here or on Zoom who would wish to testify on this measure? Please, come on up and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Cameron Hurt, Common Cause Hawaii Program Director. We would just like to offer comments and really kind of a suggestion for taking out news media. The purpose of this bill is to be able to get information and get it fast and get it quick. News media can operate privately and independently. While we here have a relatively normal relationship with our news media, this bill could potentially give a bad actor way too much access. So in the spirit of the bill, yes, but news media being in there is quite concerning.
Thank you very much. If you would like to be part of the written record, I would encourage you to send in written testimony by the end of the day today so that we could include it in late testimony in the package. Thank you very much. And if you could, please, provide your name and the organization to our Vice Chair staff over here. You can just walk over there and write it on the piece of paper. Thank you, Cameron. Anyone else wishing to testify in person here or on Zoom? If not, questions, members? Anyone have questions? I have questions. Let's see. DLNR, if I could have you come up, please. From what I've been learning about this bill, which was really developed in concert with OIP, Office of Information Practices, that if the exceptions for public records apply, then researchers would only get what the public can access. And so what we're trying to do is actually set up a uniform system for researchers to access records, and there will be rulemaking process. And so from what I understand, there shouldn't, it's not expected that there would be a significant increase in these requests. But I wanted to see if you felt comfortable moving forward and just being part of the rulemaking process so that you can ensure your issues and concerns are addressed with Office of Information Practices through the rulemaking process.
Yeah, if the bill passed, we would have to be part of the rulemaking process. Normally, I talk to OIP before we write the bill. This one, I didn't have a chance to talk to them, so I'll make sure we talk to them.
Okay, great. Yeah, we want to make sure the agencies understand the path forward. And the Chapter 91 rulemaking process is very methodical, and so I urge you to be actively engaged with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Office of Information Practices, briefly. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your support for the bill. If the legislature does pass this bill, what do you envision as being next steps in terms of implementation?
Well, this calendar year, we're going to be working on some other rules. So probably not until at least another year, and that would give research requesters time to make requests and time for OIP and the affected agencies to see what kind of wrinkles or things turn up along the way that would be amenable to a rule or a set of rules that would address the issues and problems.
And then the Chapter 91 rulemaking process, would you first follow, would you do that by proposing rules and then getting comments, or would you try to seek out input from others as you're drafting the initial rules?
Oh, yes, definitely. We would want the affected parties to give us as much input as possible so we have rules that don't get bogged down in the process.
Okay, great. So I appreciate you taking that consultative process. I think it will ease the fears of some in the agencies, if you could do that. Great, thank you very much. Any other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 411 relating to Ethics Administrative Fines. This measure establishes uniform provisions for the assessment of administrative penalties under the State Ethics Code and the lobbyist law. On this measure, we have the Hawaii State Ethics Commission Executive Director, Robert Harris. Welcome.
Welcome, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, and staff. My name is Robert Harris. On behalf of the Ethics Commission, we are in support of this measure. I would depict this essentially as an efficiency measure. We have a charge process, which is the formal process by which a violation is communicated to respondent. They have an opportunity to respond, then a further statement's filed. Generally speaking, that process can take about six months. For situations where the facts are fairly clear, where the law is fairly clear, the intent here is to create a more efficient process, which hopefully will save time for both respondent and the state. The respondent would still have a full opportunity to have a hearing if they so choose, so the intent here is to, again, just streamline the process itself. This is modeled off of a law already in place for the Campaign Spending Commission, and so again, the intent here is just efficiency, but not to necessarily change anything substantive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony that we've received. Is there anyone else here in person or online that wishes to testify on House Bill 411? If not, questions, members? No, no questions? I don't have any questions either? Thank you very much. Let's move on. House Bill 412 relating to lobbying. This measure establishes certain presumptions regarding testimony when provided by a lobbyist, makes certain contracts voidable when entered into in violation of the state lobbying law. It expands the definition of lobbying in the state lobbying law to include certain communications with high-level government officials regarding procurement decisions. That's a critical part of this bill. Expanding the definition of lobbying in the state lobbying law to include certain communications with high-level government officials, like directors and deputy directors, regarding procurement decisions. So it includes them as well. So first up, we have Robert Harris, Executive Director, Hawaii State Ethics Commission.
Good afternoon, aloha, once again. Chair, this measure is based on the same bill from last year, so some of the discussions from last year are the same here. As we noted in our testimony, a number of states, again, the lobbying laws, Hawaii was the very first state to create an ethics commission, and a number of the laws that we passed became the national template. And over time, the lobbying laws nationally have evolved quite a bit, and ours And over time, the lobbying laws nationally have evolved quite a bit, and ours has not necessarily caught up. So we noted a number of other states that have similar provisions, which essentially are looking at interactions predominantly of the executive branch and expanding the definition of lobbying to include those. What we proposed here, specific to procurement, and that makes sense. Again, we have millions, if not billions, of dollars that go out in contracts. And the same philosophy and reasoning why other states have done this is to ensure that there's transparency around these interactions. And so if somebody's doing pitches, essentially, trying to communicate with the executive branch, saying, "You really need to put a contract out for this. You really need to issue something for this." The idea is if those communications are on behalf of a company and they're beyond a certain amount of time, that that would be reportable. And this allows competitors to be aware of it, to understand what's going on. It allows the public to see it, and the idea is that you're supposed to have more efficiency. You're supposed to have, hopefully, less potentials for corruption to occur as a result of this. What we've proposed here is relatively narrow. Again, we've gone after high-level executive branch members. I think some of the points of contention last year that we weren't broad enough, that should it be including more executive branch members. We still believe that it's important to maybe focus on the high level and allow us to give an opportunity to get this going. And we can certainly revisit in a few years to see if we want to try to expand who this would cover in the future. I have had an opportunity to review the testimony of others, if you don't mind if I could just briefly address. There is a provision in the Ethics Code which currently says that if somebody acts unethically and gets a contract or a license or permit, the state attorney general can move to revoke that contract, state permit, et cetera. We've proposed similar language here with regards to contracts. So if a contract's awarded by unethical lobbying behavior, predominantly somebody who's not registered, has gone, had interactions, hasn't reported it, the state attorney general, at their sole discretion, would have the ability to act to move to revoke this. In the history of this provision being in the Ethics Code, I am not aware of it ever being exercised. And again, I think the attorney general in this situation would only exercise it in a situation where there was really egregious behavior and it benefited the state. So there is some ability to sort of ascertain and consult the agency impacted to make sure that this is a smart move. The reason why this language is important is that when you're dealing with multimillion-dollar contracts, the potential of a $5,000 administrative fine may not, may simply be a cost of doing business. But the potential of having that contract voided, even if it's a very minuscule possibility, is far more likely to have people want to follow this and, and be, and make sure that this isn't a possibility to them specifically. So we do think it's an important provision. We also don't believe that it would be exercised in a way that would damage or hurt the state in any way. Finally, there were some concern by one individual who was communicating about whether or not they may suddenly become a lobbyist, and I think we've mollified their concerns. This creates a presumption, as drafted, that if somebody's testifying on the same matter, it directly benefits their employer or a business they own, that there's a presumption that they're acting as a lobbyist. And the key language is directly benefits. We've had some outlier situations where somebody's testified on the same matter in very similar language as their employer, and they've said, "Hey, well, I'm just volunteering. I'm not, my pay isn't for that." And the intent is to create a presumption, simply saying, "We're going to presume you are," and you would have to rebut that, or you'd have to sort of ascertain, specify that. Again, the key language, again, is directly benefit. So if you're just generally testifying on matters of general interest or general tax matters, that would not be something we'd consider here. Thank you for letting me go a little bit long. I appreciate it, and if you have any questions, happy to answer this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that explanation. Next, we have testimony from the State Procurement Office. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Bonnie Kahakui, Admin Administrator for the State Procurement Office. We provided comments to this bill, and as the Ethics Commission point out, it already is in Chapter 84 Standards of Conduct, which addresses voidable contracts. But our other concern is the consequences of voiding a contract. And we just want to make the committee aware of them, that there may be some unintended consequences, such as delays in the start or completion of a project, warranty issues, obligations to third parties, or the increase of costs to reprocure. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. And we have also received written testimony with comments from Natalie Iwasa. That's all the testimony that we have on this measure. Is there anyone else here in person or on Zoom wishing to testify on House Bill 412? If not, questions, members? If not, I have a question. Mr. Harris? So you've heard the concern from the State Procurement Office, and do you have any additional comments that you want to make in response to the highlighted points of the testimony that the administrator Kahakui has just provided?
Thank you, Chair. First, appreciate the comments from the State Procurement Office, and we're happy to continue working with them to see if there's anything we can do to mollify the concerns. As noted, this is modeled on many other states, and so, you know, to some extent, this is a provision that has worked elsewhere. Secondly, I'd say that the only entity that could actually step forward of this is the Attorney General's office, and that they do so in collaboration with the agency impacted. And so if the state were to put in a situation where the loss of that contract caused great harm, presumptively, we'd have to trust the AG that they would not proceed forward with trying to revoke it. It also, again, as I indicated, it is a motivator to make sure that contractors that are essentially lobbying the executive branch for bids for contracts are going to report. And secondly, it does give the AGs the ability to have some influence in that over time as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Thank you to all the testifiers. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 413 relating to lobbyist contributions. This measure clarifies administrative oversight of statutory restrictions relating to prohibited lobbyist contributions. It clarifies that the regular or special sessions in which lobbyist contributions are prohibited are periods during which both houses of the legislature are in session. The public will remember that sometimes the Senate comes into session on its own for advice and consent, and the House does not come into session. So that's why this bill actually clarifies that both houses of the legislature are in session in order for this prohibition to be in place. Okay, 413, first up, we have Mr. Harris, Executive Director, Hawaii State Ethics Commission.
Chair, once again, aloha, Robert Harris, on behalf of Hawaii State Ethics Commission in support of this measure. Again, also wanted to express my thanks for this bill and the past two bills for hearing them. This is a clarifying bill, just members, so you understand. This law passed two years ago, which essentially prohibits lobbyists, both at the county and state level, from making campaign contributions during the legislative session and/or special sessions. One of the unintended issues that arose is that both the Ethics Commission and the Campaign Spending Commission have jurisdiction under the current law over lobbyists. And the problem would be is inconsistent interpretations, potentially double fining somebody for the same behavior. The Campaign Spending Commission and the Ethics Commission have always collaborated very well, and we've collaborated on this. The intent here is just simply to clarify who has jurisdiction over lobbyists. We have asked for a proposed amendment, or two amendments, just line language. The Campaign Spending Commission has jurisdiction over all candidates. However, the State Ethics Commission has jurisdiction over state lobbyists, and there are county counterparts, either boards or commissions, that may or may not have similar laws in place. And so we're proposing to just narrow this specifically, that we'd have jurisdiction over state lobbyists and to leave county lobbyists as is. I hope that makes sense. Apologize, it's a confusing set of things, but again, the intent isn't to substantially change the law, just basically say who has jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Cam, and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. We support this bill. It clarifies the roles of the Campaign Spending Commission, which is to regulate the candidates. And the role of the State Ethics Commission is to regulate the lobbyists. So I think this bill makes that clear. The Commission also supports the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Is there anyone else here in person or online wishing to testify on House Bill 413? If not, questions, members? I have a question for Mr. Harris. In, in decision-making, I'm going to recommend that we might move some of the language around so that it's better crafted at the recommendation of our bill analysts and attorneys. But there's one, on page four, lines 11 to 13, the language in there says that the illegal contribution may s-cheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund, as directed by the Campaign Spending Commission. But page two, line 19 to 21, says the illegal contribution shall s-cheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund. I think we want to be consistent, so I think probably it should be shall. Is that, would you recommend that?
I would probably, that case defer to the Campaign Spending Commission, because that is going to be under their jurisdiction.
That's under their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Cam, could I ask you to come up and respond to that question? It would be page four, line 11, 13. It says, "The illegal contribution may s-cheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund, as directed by Campaign Spending Commission." Page two, lines 19 to 21, says the illegal contribution shall s-cheat.
In line with the other activist contributions or illegal contributions, it should be shall.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions, members? If not, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 149 relating to corporations. This measure requires domestic and foreign corporations to provide their shareholders with reports of independent expenditures and political contributions. We have received testimony from Mattson. It's comments only, and they're written only. I would refer members to the testimony where, in summary, they're saying, "It would be very expensive and cumbersome to be able to tell all the shareholders." And furthermore, you know, they don't believe any public company can ensure that a mailing would reach all shareholders. But they point out that Mattson complies with all federal and state reporting requirements so that the information required to be reported under this measure is already publicly available and easily accessible through the State of Hawaii Campaign Spending Commission website and the U.S. Federal Elections Commission website. So anyone who is interested can get the most up-to-date information through those sites. So it's already publicly available. So that's their testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, HB 149? If not, questions, members? Quick question of the Campaign Spending Commission. Mattson says that this information is already available on your website, available to the public, and easily accessible. Is that accurate?
It is available if you're looking for what's in our disclosure reports, and it's, it's easy to access. But the problem, I think, is who's going to do that, right?
But the question, so my question is, if the individual company complies with state reporting requirements, and they file their disclosure to you, and you post that, is that readily available to the public on your website?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I need to know. Thank you very much.
Chair, can I ask a follow-up?
Certainly. Representative Bellotti.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. I, I understand, and I acknowledge that it isn't publicly available, but I think what you were sort of commenting about was that it's probably difficult for the public to find that information. So are you aware, in other jurisdictions, if there is authority where states require corporations to disclose to their shareholders, whether it's a campaign spending or finance area or in another area? Because I think the fact is, right, we know Citizens United provides a lot of authority for corporations to give, and sometimes the sunshine is not really present. And I think that's what that, this bill is getting towards. So are you aware of any other states that have statutes or regulations that require disclosure specifically to shareholders?
I do not, not on this topic, but this is more in line with the business code or the business law than it is campaign spending. It's requiring a business to get, it's requiring a corporation to give information to its shareholders. You know, I don't know the law on what is permissible, but you're right, though. What I was getting to that, getting to is that the fact that it might be readily available does not mean that people are going to access it. This, if this is important enough, this would require the corporations to provide that information directly to the shareholders.
Okay, if I could ask another follow-up question, Chair? I know that the Campaign Spending Commission routinely goes to national conferences where they share best practices, and I'm sure that concerns about the activity of corporations acting as persons because of Citizens United is a topic at these conversations. So as you go forward, if you could provide us any insights, if there are states doing other things to require disclosure, and I won't put it all on you, because I understand that maybe it might be something that our business attorneys should actually be, or, you know, our DCCA should be looking at, because it might not really fall under your jurisdiction but versus just corporate disclosures. So if, if, if that's something that you could do perhaps in the future, that would be helpful.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Cam. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, sure. A quick follow-up, if I may. If a corporation like Mattson did file all the required reports on contributions, that information is posted on your website, and would the public be able to access that if they were a Mattson shareholder, for example? Could they find the contributions that Mattson has given?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the idea that it's difficult to access, is that, it, it, it's something that all depends on the individual's ability to get on your website and actually look for it. But you're trying, you're trying to make your website and access to this information as, as easy as possible, right?
Yes, it is easy to access. The, I think it would be the inclination of a person to come to our website. I mean, unless they knew that the corporation did some kind of spending that they want to look, look up.
Yeah.
I would say most people don't.
Right, but if somebody is a shareholder, and they want to know what campaign contributions their company has made, then if they were to look for that information, the Campaign Spending Commission has all that information available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Representative Russo.
Sorry, you can't see me. So question for Campaign Spending Commission. What I noticed when I searched the database is that, you know, sometimes a person will identify their corporate affiliation, and sometimes they won't. And I'm curious as to how you enforce that, because it seems very uneven to me. So maybe you could talk a little bit about that, because, you know, if, if we are expecting that if we are searching for corporate affiliations, when we search them, and then we're not finding them in all cases, because individuals who sometimes donate in the, like, and identify their affiliation, but then other times often do not, I'm wondering about who follows up in kind of tracking that information?
Well, if you're, if you're talking about an individual who is, who makes a contribution of over $1,000, then that person would have to, a candidate would have to identify that person's employer. I think that's different from this situation where you're talking about corporate spending. So if a corporate entity makes a campaign expenditure or, or contribution in an amount that they would have to register with us, which is a really small amount now, they would have to register either just their name or their political action committee or any non-candidate committee. And in our law, it has a provision where your non-candidate committee has to contain a portion of your corporate identity, so people know who is the corporation behind the non-candidate committee.
Okay.
So I'm not sure which type So I'm not sure which type of contribution you're talking about, an individual or...
Yeah, I'm just, you know, kind of reflecting on various data analyses I've done of campaign contributions in the past and thinking about the unevenness of the data, but then also wondering if that's the effect of changes in law over time.
I don't think so. I think there's always been a requirement that you report the employer of the contributor if it's over $1,000. And if you, if you attempt to file a report with that information missing and you validate the report, it'll flag it.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
But if you don't validate it, then it won't be flagged. But then we'll follow up with the candidate if they don't have the employer's name.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for those questions. Any other questions, members? If not, let's go on to the next measure. Thank you. House Bill 369. This, relating to campaign contributions, this measure amends Section 11-364 Hawaii Revised Statutes to provide that an excess contribution of more than $100 in cash in aggregate from a single person during an election period to a candidate, candidate committee, or non-candidate committee shall escheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund, if not returned to the contributor within 30 days. For our word of the day for JHA Committee, the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee, our word of the day is escheat. E-S-C-H-E-A-T. It's a process by which property reverts to the state. Isn't that cool? Escheat. Okay. On this measure, we have testimony from the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam, and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. This, we consider this a housekeeping measure. In 2023, the legislature put a cap on cash contributions from a person to no more than $100. This bill would provide for the return of that excess within 30 days or escheat, which has been defined, right? If I can say it this year, right? If it's not returned within the 30 days. So it's the same thing that happens to all excess-type contribution.
Great, thank you very much. That's all the testimony we've received on House Bill 369. Is there anyone else here in the room or on Zoom that wishes to testify? If not, questions, members? No questions, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next measure, House Bill 370, relating to partial public financing of elections. This measure increases the amount of partial public campaign financing available for all state and county elective offices, increasing the maximum amount of public funds available for each election for candidates for mayor of the County of Kauai and County of Maui by 125%. For the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, from 1,500 to 10% of the expenditure limit established in another part of HRS, Hawaii Revised Statutes. And for candidates for all other offices, increased by 50%. It amends another part of the statute by increasing the amounts of qualifying contributions for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs from more than $1,500 in the aggregate to more than $5,000 in the aggregate. It provides a downward adjustment of the amounts of qualifying contributions for the Office of Prosecuting Attorney, for the City and County of Honolulu, County of Hawaii, County of Kauai, and for the Office of County Council for the County of Maui. And provides for an unspecified appropriation to pay for the increase in the partial public financing program and provides for an appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the Commission to hire two additional staff members. On this, we have testimony from the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam, and I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. This bill is one that we've been trying to get passed for a number of years now. The amounts available under the partial public financing statute has not changed since 1995. And, well, primarily, the Commission was concerned with the low amount that was given to people running for the Office of Trustees, for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, which was, which was 1,500, which is $1,500 for the entire election, both the primary and the general. And then, as we went through this process, then we thought, well, you know, all of the, all of the offices needs an upgrade since it's been so long. That's what we're trying to do here, keeping in mind that this is still a partial public financing program and not a comprehensive financing program. But it's also a constitutional program that is here to stay. And so we might as well modernize the numbers available or the amounts available since it's a program that we have to run. You know, I can't, I can't stand here before you and start talking about math and think, you know, do the equations and all of that. But in the testimony, I do put the numbers down on calculating for the new amounts for each office, as well as there's an overall amount of $2.3 million if every, if one candidate in every office qualified for public funding, which, you know, won't happen exactly that way, because in any given election, not all offices are up for election, but you could have multiple candidates, you know, running in for the same office being qualified. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Next, we have testimony in support from the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. We don't stand by testimony, so I'll just refer, members, to the written testimony, if you prefer, so you don't have to stand up. So it's, and the testimony is in support. Next, we have testimony in support from Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action on Zoom, Anne Frederick. Please proceed.
Hello, everybody. My name is Arielle Juliet Castillo. I'm standing in for Annie Frederick. I'm here on behalf of Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. We strongly support HB 370 and all efforts to increase public financing in campaigns. This bill updates our public campaign financing system, which hasn't been touched in 30 years. Inflation has doubled the cost of everything since then, making the current system totally inadequate for today's campaigns. HB 370 would fix this by increasing the amount of public funds available, making public funding an actual real option for more people. The need for reform is clear. For example, since 1994, incumbents in the Hawaii House have been able to outspend challengers by more than three to one, and 90% of them get reelected. We urge you to support HB 370 and show voters that we're serious about leveling the playing field. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that we have been informed is in person to testify is with our Hawaii, Evan Weber, not online? Online.
Aloha, Rep. Tarnas.
You're online, okay. Please, go ahead, Mr. Weber.
You can't escape me.
I'm not trying to.
I'm just kidding. Mal, Rep. Tarnas, and Vice Chair and all committee members for the opportunity to testify today. Yeah, refer to my written testimony, but just want to emphasize a couple of aspects of it. We are supportive of this legislation and do hope that the committee will pass it. As many folks know, we've been an outspoken supporter of adding a comprehensive, full public financing system to our current campaign finance system over the last couple of years. But we do also support the expansion of the partial public financing system and view these systems as complementary, as any ability that, any opportunity that we give candidates to run on public funds and not have the influence of private donations in elected office, we view as positive. And we also think that any opportunity that we're able to support candidates who may not have as much access to private donations to run for office is positive as well. That said, we do want to suggest a couple of amendments that we include in our written testimony. So the first is, in the justification for the match being, moving from a one-to-one to a two-to-one, it references the doubling of inflation since 1995, when the system was first designed. It's our sense that by that same logic, you should also have the multipliers by which the, by which the expenditure amounts are set also reflect inflation. So we suggest doubling those multipliers as well. For a given House candidate, this would increase the average of public funds from around $3,000 to around $10,000 that they might receive when, coupled with the other changes in the bill. So this is not a comprehensive public financing system. It's not enough to really run a race on, as most people here would know. But it would be reflective of inflation and help candidates do a little bit more to to run those campaigns. And we also can...
Thank you. Could you, could you wrap up your testimony? That'd be great.
I'll wrap it up there. Thank you, Representative Tarnas.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Weber. Next, we have testimony from Anne Saffery on Zoom. Not present, okay? And then we have Brett Colbus on Zoom. Please proceed.
Hello, I'm Chair Tarnas, members of the committee. My name is Brett Colbus. I'm a 24-year or 26-year Navy veteran. I live in Eva Beach. I am opposed to this measure. There's no empirical evidence that public financing of elections has any effect that our proponents, the proponents would suggest that they do. My whole objection to this is twofold. One is, if you look at the last two election cycles, very few of the elected officials who are proposing this amendment or this bill actually have taken public financing, whether it's partial, even though it's a partial public financing. So it's sort of ironic that the, that members of this, of the legislature would be asking for this without actually doing it themselves. Secondly, as a taxpayer, you know, I don't appreciate, I would not, I don't appreciate my tax dollars going potentially to a candidate running for an office that is not my legislator, is not my senator, and potentially does not have the same viewpoints and values that I do. So I would urge you to defer this indefinitely. Thank you for your time. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colbus. That's the last person we've got on the list that said they would be here. We've received a lot of written testimony, total, in addition to what we've already heard, we have an additional 66 testifiers in support and another testifier in opposition. I was just going to ask if there's anyone in the room or on Zoom that would wish to testify?
If you'll have me.
Mr. Cameron Hurt, please proceed.
Cameron Hurt, coming close to Hawaii. An apologies, we had a technical issue with getting our testimony in, but we'll make sure that they're in after this hearing. Really quickly, we want to say that we're in strong support of this. 1995, none of us in any of our professional lives would take pay that we were getting in our respective jobs in 1995. People in the legislature can't use this program because it's not competitive if you are appropriating funds from a scale that was used in 1995. Time and time again, advocates and legislators have given different bills to help improve this program that we know needs improving. This isn't something that's just coming out of the blue. This isn't coming out of a vacuum. This is coming directly from the Foley Commission. So it's time that we make real, meaningful steps. And this bill is a great, meaningful step to expound on and continue to grow, which what we, is what we need to do. But this is a great step in the right direction. I want to say just one more thing before I leave. That should not be missed, and it is the appropriation for the two extra positions. 1995 is insane. But if you look at the fact that the CSC hasn't had an added position since statehood, that is downright ludicrous, and it is a derelict of duty from people who have sat in your seats prior to you guys.
Let's not...
Now that you are here.
Now that you are here. Let's not criticize members of the House, if I may, Mr. Hurt. Try to have decorum, civility. And so please focus on the issue and the topic in the bill.
The issue is that not funding a state government or expanding its statehood is something that I think we all should be able to see as a problem. I don't think that that lacks decorum at all. This is why we are in strong favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I will try to make sure that we all express our opinions, because it's very important to hear those opinions. But for those legislators who are not here, they can't defend themselves, so let's just focus on the topics. I think I'm the only one here that was, was actually in the House in 1995. Okay, we have one testimony with comments that I want to highlight, and the rest are, as I say, in support or one in opposition, in addition to Mr. Colbus in opposition. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure here or online? If not, questions, members? Representative Garcia.
Thank you, Chair, for the Campaign Spending Commission. Thanks for being here in person. My question is, in this last election cycle, 2024, how many participants used the partial public financing system?
It was, it wasn't a whole lot.
Could you move the microphone next to you?
It wasn't a whole lot. I don't have that number off the top of my head, maybe.
A few.
Nine to 15.
Okay. So nine to 15, and is that average per election cycle about less than 20, per se?
The participation has been going down.
Has been going down, okay. Thank you.
If you could be prepared, if we do decide to move this forward, I would suggest you be prepared to say, in the previous election cycles, these are the numbers of candidates that utilize partial public financing, so you could answer that question. If we do pass this out, it goes to finance.
If you, since we were talking about our website, that information is on our website.
But if finance asks the question, I'd like you to be able to answer it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thanks very much for that question, Representative Garcia. Other questions? Representative Bellotti?
Mr. Kam, sort of a follow-up. In the history of the partial public financing, what races have typically used it? And in particular, I'm concerned about whether the executives, if you are aware of any executives who've used it. I know that Governor David Egan, his first term, did use it, but I don't know that others have.
I guess the main users would be the council, especially the outer islands, and state representatives.
So the smaller races?
Yeah.
Which is, in fact, in some ways, if we were to look at resources, a better allocation of resources to encourage it, because it's at those levels that people are first entering the political system.
Well, you know, the overall problem could be just the low amount in general. And, you know, if you do an increase across the board, then an increase in usage might be also across the board. So I don't really know how to answer that question.
Fair enough. Oh, Chair, one more follow-up question?
Certainly.
There was some representation in the testimony that there's not evidence that public financing works or has been utilized, and the numbers bear it out because there's been a declining number. But if some of the goals are to encourage individuals who may not be as connected or recipients of corporate donations or the larger donations, wasn't there, in fact, a pilot program, maybe a decade ago, that demonstrated actually that a more robust public financing system does work, and that is in the pilot program that was run, I think, for the Big Island of Hawaii or the Island of Hawaii? And if you could comment on that program, just to dispel this myth that public financing doesn't work, to encourage a more diverse spectrum of individuals to run for office?
So there was a pilot program for the Big Island County race. It was, it first ran in 2010, in 2012, and then the third, the third election of the project was 2014, which we couldn't run it because our funds had gone below the, I think it was $3 million. So under the terms of the program, we couldn't run it. And I think in general, if you have a public dollar taking the place of a private dollar, I think that helps in that you're reducing that notion that, you know, private money is buying all the decisions being made here. So I think any, any amount helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Poipoi, Vice Chair?
So in the bill, you suggest...
So in, in the bill, you suggest a, from a one-to-one match to a two-to-one match. Can you explain how that figure was determined and if you would support or not support a three-to-one match, four-to-one match, like a higher match? I'm just curious on how the two-to-one was determined and whether or not there are reasons why or why not you would support a different match?
Well, seriously, I think the two-to-one match was considered because two came after one. I'm, you know, I'm not sure, but the commission will support any other match. The, the goal is to get the candidate to the maximum amount as quickly as possible, but the, the match, whether it's two or three or four-to-one, does not increase the maximum amount that's going to be available. So it's just that, to make it easier on the candidate.
Okay. One more question?
Certainly.
I was just wondering if you could explain where the funding for the program comes
The trust fund, the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund, is made up of the tax checkoff, right? $3. It's made up of S G, of S Ged funds. We used to, the fund used to have the fines come into it, but that, that was taken away from the fund. And the interest on the principal. Those are the primary sources.
Thank you. I'm just trying to clarify that it's not necessarily from taxpayers in the sense that it, it's from primarily the checkoff box when you do your taxes as a choice. It's something you can choose to contribute to or not when you do your taxes, and then the S Ged fund, is cheat funds and the interest, the interest.
Right, so if the taxpayer chooses to check that box, and that is an assignment of fund, of taxpayer monies into the fund.
It's a choice, though.
It, it is a choice, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. Let's move on. We have testimony from Evan Weber, our Hawaii, on Zoom.
Great. Sorry, which legislation is this on now?
House Bill 371.
Oh, excellent. Yes, we are in support of House Bill 371. This is to close the loophole that currently exists and expand the ban on donations to, from contractors to public office, and expand it so that it's comprehensive to include the executives and other affiliated people close to the contractors. We know that this is a prevalent issue. It was documented, unfortunately, in the pages of the New York Times just to the end of last legislative session, and the legislature did not, of course, have the time to respond and act on that bombshell of an expose for a lot of us that really detailed a lot of the very negative behavior that had been happening at very high levels of counties and state offices. So I hope that, and I trust that the legislature will take swift, swift action to close this pay-to-play loophole this year.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
I, I apologize, I, I'm rusty. Let me back up and say, our next bill we're going to hear is HB 371 relating to campaign contributions. So that's why you're momentarily off balance, Mr. Weber. On this measure, the measure prohibits state and county grantees, officers, and immediate family members of state and county contractors, and officers and immediate family members of state and county grantees from contributing to candidate or non-candidate committees for the duration of the contract. The measure requires candidates and candidate campaign, candidate committees or non-candidate committees to return any unlawful contribution to the contributor within 30 calendar days of receipt, and provides that if any unlawful contribution is not returned to the contributor within 30 calendar days, the unlawful contribution shall S cheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund. Thanks for the testimony, Mr. Weber. Let's now go to the Campaign Spending Commission for your testimony on this measure, HB 371.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam, I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. This bill is, again, a bill that we've introduced, I think, in the past two years. This bill will extend the ban on contractor contributions to grantees of the state and counties, as well as the officers and immediate family members of the contractors and grantees. We believe that the extension to grantees is justified because the grantees, like the contractors, are accepting public monies. Concern has been raised that candidates will not readily know who the contractors or grantees or their officers or immediate family members may be. That may be true, so we are offering an amendment where we would put in the bill a requirement that the state and county agencies that are administering these contracts would notify the commission of the contractors, the grantees, as well as the officers and immediate families. So there would have to be some kind of information exchange. And one thing we have been exploring is making that requirement part of the standard terms and conditions that the Attorney General's Office produced. So, so if they could amend that to add this requirement, right now that the terms and conditions says that you cannot give because of 11-355, but that's all it says. This would require the information on the officers and the immediate family members, which, if this bill is passed, then I think the, we can talk to the Attorney General's Office, because then it's going to be a prohibition in the law that, that, that needs to somehow be enforced more efficiently than tips.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Our next testifier was Evan Weber, who provided his testimony already. The next person we know is going to testify, or we were told is going to testify via Zoom is Ann Saffery, not present. And that's all the testimony, the rest of the testimony is in writing. I will ask in a moment if there's anyone else wishing to testify in person, but to tell the members and the public that there are 67 testifiers in support that are not here today. None in opposition and none just only comments. Is there anyone else here in the room or online that wishes to testify on this measure? Okay, you're okay, okay. No one else wishing to testify? If not, then let's go to questions, members? Any questions?
No, no, no.
Representative Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Campaign Spending Commission. My understanding from what you recently stated was the question of the candidate receiving the donation, knowing who are these family members and so forth. And I heard you say that you would, to address this, you would propose some kind of paperwork requirement where contractors who are doing state or county projects or people who have benefited from this would have to fill out information stating this information and then providing it to the Campaign Spending Commission? Is that, is that correct?
Well, the bill itself requires the county and state agencies that actually deal with these contractors and grantees, they're the ones that enter into these contracts to provide that information to the Campaign Spending Commission, and then we make that, that information available to the users of our website.
Oh, so that information would be posted on your website, so any candidate committee would refer to that listing to, to know if these donors are flagged and?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Bellotti?
Thank you, Mr. Kam. So the representation made was that this bill could address some of the findings that came out from the New York Times report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Also, would this address and have made it more possible? Because I think as we watched both the New York Times reporting and then the trial regarding Mr. Mitsunaga, I think one of the problems with that trial was that there wasn't language that it was inappropriate for immediate family members to, to provide donations. Would this also close that loophole that kind of existed in the unsuccessful prosecution in that case?
Yes and no. It would close a loophole, and I'm not sure that what was being prosecuted was this kind of a situation. I think it was more of a bribery case.
Okay.
So I, I don't think it would, but it would close a loophole.
Okay. And then it would make clear that it's unlawful for state or county contractors and their family members and officers of those contract, those corporations to be, be giving donations.
Yes, and the immediate family of the officers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any other questions, members? Not? Again, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay. If not, thanks very much. We'll move on to the next measure. House Bill 372 relating to campaign contributions. This measure prohibits state and county elected officials from soliciting and accepting campaign contributions during any regular session or special session of the state legislature, including any extension of any regular session or special session or any legislative recess day, holiday, or weekend. On this measure, first up, Gary Kam, Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam, I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. In 2022, the legislature prohibited fundraising during a legislative session for elected officials. This, this bill would sort of speak, close a loophole of also prohibiting the solicitation or receipt of contributions during that same period. If you are a regular user or visitor to our website, you, you can see that contributions are not only received in response to a fundraising fundraiser. Contributions are just be given to candidates at any time, that, you know, the reasons why aren't apparent, it is just, it's just reported as being given on a date. And if you look at the notices of fundraisers, there isn't a corresponding notice that was filed. So these contributions can come in at any time, they don't require a fundraiser. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have testimony in support from eight individuals, testimony in support from Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action, and testimony in opposition from Lynn Matrusaw. If you read Lynn Matrusaw's testimony, she says, "I support the intent of the bill, but you need to treat the legislature differently from the counties. The county councils meet year-round. There's no reason except being, there's no reason to prohibit campaign contributions for the county officials when the legislature is in session." So that was her point. Is there anyone else here or online wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we will move on.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, yes, please. Representative Shimizu.
I just want to clarify, this is to Campaign Spending Commission, this is to elected officials, correct? Not, not just candidates in general, right?
Elected officials.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? If not, let's move on. House Bill 772 relating to campaign finance. This measure disallows the use of campaign funds to purchase up to two tickets for an event or fundraiser held by another candidate or committee. On this measure, first up, we have testimony from Gary Kam, Campaign Spending Commission.
I'm sorry, this is for 662.
This allows the use of campaign funds to purchase up to two tickets for an event or fundraiser held by another candidate or committee. Your testimony was in support.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam, I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. The commission is in support of this bill. It is in line with HRS 11, Hawaii Vice Statute 11-382, which prohibits the use of campaign funds to benefit another candidate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have testimony in support from Ann Frederick, Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Please proceed, Ann Frederick.
This is Aria again, sitting in for Annie Frederick from Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. We are testifying in strong support of HB 772. This bill would stop the use of campaign funds to buy tickets for events fundraisers held by other candidates. If you look through the Campaign Spending Commission data, there are campaigns that honor the spirit of this rule by purchasing tickets at the price point that is available to the public, such as $40 to $100 to $250, $250. However, the majority of these contributions from other campaigns are actually just the maximum contribution disguised as a fundraising ticket. Contribution can be passed on from one campaign to another campaign and then another campaign, making the origin of the money impossible to track. Theoretically, candidate A could donate the max amount to five different campaigns, who could then turn it around and all donate it to candidate B. Candidates who have taken pledges not to take money from certain entities, for example, tobacco money or gun lobby money, could inadvertently accept it from another campaign through these fundraising tickets and really not be aware of it, or the public would definitely not know. HB 772 ensures that campaign funds are only used for campaign, candidates' own campaigns, and allows the public to see where the money comes from and where it's spent. We urge you to support HB 772 and take another step towards fair, more transparent elections. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person said they wanted to testify is Evan Weber, our Hawaii, in support.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I will reference my written testimony in support and just add a mahalo to the legislature, the House in particular, and this committee for passing a similar measure last year to close this loophole and hope that you'll continue to do so again.
Thank you. Next person that said they were going to testify is Ann Palacios. Not present, okay. In addition, we have received 60 testimonies in support, one with comments, and, and that's it. Is there anyone else here in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify on this measure? Nope, okay. Questions, members? I have one question for Campaign Spending Commission. The representative from the Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action was saying that, you know, if candidates sometimes will give the listed price as a contribution, they can buy two tickets, so, and then she said that, but sometimes they give the full amount of the maximum, which is $2,000, to House seats. My understanding is you can only do this if the ticket price would include a $1,000 ticket. Is that your understanding?
You can give the ticket price. You can purchase two tickets.
It has to be the advertised ticket price.
Yes.
So that advertised ticket price has to include $1,000 as one of the price points in order for someone to buy two tickets to give the maximum.
Yes.
Yeah. So a member of the public could do the same thing. So a member of the public could do the same thing. But it has to be, the fundraiser has to say that there are tickets available at that price point, at $1,000, in order for someone to buy two of them to reach the maximum.
If you are a candidate.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make it clear, because there was an assertion made in a testimony that you could give more than what that ticket price is, but that's not the case. You have to state what that ticket price is.
If, yes, if you are giving to a candidate, if you're a candidate giving to another candidate for a fundraising event, yes.
Okay. I just want to make it clear, make sure that the public understands the facts. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you. We'll move on. House Bill 662 relating to campaign finance. This measure repeals the exemption for the expenditure of candidates' own funds under the definition of contribution. It makes contributions by the candidate's immediate family subject to contribution limits, and it amends the loan amount that a candidate or candidate committee may receive from the candidate's own funds or immediate family. First up, we have testimony from Gary Kam with the Campaign Spending Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gary Kam. I'm with the Campaign Spending Commission. I think I should first say that the bill says that the commission opposes the bill. I mean, the testimony says that the commission opposes the bill. I think it should more, it should state that we have concerns with the bill. And the concern that we have is that this bill would limit a candidate's use of his or her own funds to the limits provided in 11-357 and would also limit the candidate's use of his own funds to provide a loan to his campaign. I think there are problems with doing that because... So the courts have upheld campaign finance legislation where the purpose is to prevent corruption and appearance of corruption. I cannot see how a candidate's use of their own funds is corruption or that would, there would be an appearance of corruption because there's no one else involved. It's just the candidate using his or her own funds. So I would suggest that the committee, and I don't know how it works, but consult with the Department of the Attorney General. Because I just don't, we just cannot see how there's corruption involved when it's just personal funds of a candidate being used. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Aria Juliet Castillo. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair, Aria Juliet Castillo again. I'm testifying in my personal capacity for this bill. I wholeheartedly support the intent of 662, but I'd like to highlight specific areas improvement for the proposed changes and offer some amendments. The proposed aggregate loan limit does not accurately reflect financial demands of campaigns for various races or affect the current contribution limits for different campaigns. Contribution loan limits should be adjusted based on the scale of the race. These increased loans amounts ensures that candidates have the resources to run competitive campaigns. This becomes especially important when factoring in outside influence on the campaign and running alongside incumbents who have been allowed to accumulate large campaign account balances over their career, something I'm hoping this committee can address in the future. My suggested amendments are that for two-year terms, a loan limit that is $20,000 proportional to the max $2,000 contribution limit. For four-year terms for districts, a loan limit of $40,000 proportional to the $4,000 max contribution limit. And for statewide campaigns, a loan limit of $60,000 proportional to the $6,000 max contribution. Honestly, that's not realistic enough capital to start a professional run race at that size, but I'll just leave it at that. The requirement that loans must be repaid within one year is unnecessarily restrictive given that the limitations for incumbents that can't raise money during elective legislative session, campaign fundraising often intensifies closer to election date, which might fall outside of that one-year repayment period where the loan is likely made at the beginning of their campaign. I propose amending the repayment deadline to align with the end of campaign spending reporting. This would give the candidate sufficient time to manage and repay their funds outside of the primary election or general election deadline. I'm also concerned about limiting the loans to individuals who are not the candidate or immediate family. It seems that if they can secure loans from other people, they should be able to secure loans from themselves. As the gentleman from Campaign Spending Commission said, "It's much more transparent to see a candidate take a loan out from themselves or their family as opposed to someone who's unrelated to them." Allowing the candidates to self-fund at a limit allows first-time candidates and perhaps those moving into higher office to adequately finance their campaigns, particularly in the early stages, particularly against incumbents. Lastly, I must reiterate that these changes would be an improvement, but they would only benefit those already with campaign money and people in power and people who have access to money and power. We must address candidate-to-candidate contribution, accumulation of campaign coffers, proof-of-funding, and better regulation for non-candidate committee expenditures.
Thank you very much. The next person that has said they want to testify is Anne Saferi. Not present?
Not present.
Okay. That's all that has signed up to testify. And we have received written testimony, 37 more testifiers in support, and one with comments. Is there anyone else here in the room or online wishing to testify on this measure? Nope. Okay. Any questions, members? Yes, Representative?
Mr. Kam.
Bellotti.
I'm actually surprised that the Attorney General didn't weigh in on this. But, I mean, you know, given the state of our constitutional law, putting a restriction on an individual's use of their own monies would be a violation of free speech, wouldn't it?
I think that's the idea. But I think more importantly, if you look at it from a standpoint of trying to justify it, and so you're looking at preventing corruption or the appearance of corruption, we just don't see the fit in this.
Are you aware of any state that has any kind of limitation like this? Because I feel like we would be going far afield.
I am not aware.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Representative, any other questions, members? If not, thank you. We'll move on. Next one. Our very patient Elections Officer who's been waiting all his time. Very kind. Thank you. HB 134 relating to elections. This measure requires the chief election officer to provide a system for the electronic filing of nomination papers effective January 1, 2026. First up, we have our head of the Office of Elections, Scott Nago. Welcome, Scott.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Scott Nago, Office of Elections. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this bill. We welcome the opportunity to provide an electronic candidate filing system. We do, however, ask that the bill be made clear that we, the office shall be allowed to charge the processing fee, and two, that it would be implemented for the 2020 election and not 2026, because candidate filing does begin on the first working day of February, which would give us approximately seven months if it were to be implemented in 2026. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony in opposition from three individuals and written testimony in support from four other individuals. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 134? In the room or online? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. House Bill 408 relating to voter registration. This measure extends the deadline to register to vote by mail from 30 to 10 days prior to a primary or general election. It repeals obsolete language regarding permanent absentee ballots. First up, we have Scott Nago, State of Hawaii Office of Elections.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Scott Nago, Office of Elections. This bill actually amends, it amends 11-16 to conform with 1124, which was already amended previously to move the deadline from 30 days to 10 days. So this bill just makes it consistent to a 10-day voter registration deadline. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have received, I guess the next person who said they want to testify is Keith Neal in support. Nope, not online either. Nope. Okay. Next person is testimony in opposition from Mary Healy. Is Mary Healy online? Mary Healy, please proceed.
Hi. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I oppose this bill mainly because I think that the voter registration is too open in the state of Hawaii. I think that we have ample means to apply for an absentee ballot, and it just seems like a kind of a overreach. But I understand why it was brought to legislation, but I hope that you vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we've received written testimony in support from 39 other individuals. Is there anyone else here in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Bellotti?
This is for Office of Elections. And I want to preface the question with, I generally like want to encourage, you know, more time, but I'm thinking logistically, when you shrink the deadline for registration or mail-in to 10 days before an election, does that individual have enough time to understand that they should? I don't understand how you get the ballot to them if we're in all-mail-in ballot state. And then, so I don't know if it's a shorter timeline or if we should actually move it to a longer timeline so that they know how they're going to get their ballot.
So this is just the housekeeping measure? The 10-day deadline is already, that was passed in 2021. All this does is amend, like I said, all this does is amend section 1116, which was overlooked in that part. So there was, 1116 still had a 30-day deadline, but for all intents and purposes, the deadline is 10 days. This just conforms that to what the legislature amended in 2021.
Okay, let me rephrase my question then. So I get it that it's a housekeeping deadline, but then in the mechanics of it.
Yeah, so we can get a ballot to a voter if they register within a week of the election, seven days of the election.
Okay, so they get it on, say, three days before election day? And then what are they supposed to do with it? Do they have enough time to mail it back? Or does it force them to have to go physically? And again, what I'm pointing toward is the kind of mass chaos that you had on election day. If that can somehow, this might be just a little piece of it that was contributing to kind of the mass chaos, because you get your ballot three days before, and then you realize, oh, I don't have enough time to put in the mail, so then I have to go. And then hence the long lines on election day.
Yeah. So this doesn't really contribute to the lines at the voter service centers, because these voters would take their ballot. If you still have your ballot closer to election day, we don't recommend you drop it off in the mail, but we do recommend you take it to a place of deposit or a drop box, which was not a voter service center. So a voter service center would be in-person voting, which is the long lines you referenced. This does not impact those voters.
Okay. I think, and maybe this is far afield, but it just, and it might be for...
It's a different bill?
Yeah, it's a different bill. It might be for an informational briefing at another moment, but it would be interesting to understand how all of these things, because we're in this system, right, in this middle system where we were progressing for all mail-in, then we have now, we see people increasingly wanting to be in person and then all mail. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, certainly. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Did we have, asked anybody else if they wanted to testify? And nobody else wants to testify, so we're okay. So we're going to move on to the last measure. House Bill 141 relating to the Elections Commission. This measure makes the members of the Elections Commission subject to the advice and consent of the Senate. Let's see, we have Jamie Detwiler with Hawaiian Islands Republican Women testifying in opposition. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and members of the committee. I stand in strong opposition to HB 141. I'd like to start with a premise for all of us to be aware of. The current partisan balance of the Elections Commission is threatened by HB 141. According to David Mayhew, Ph.D., Sterling Professor of Political Science at Yale University, partisan balance, as demonstrated in Congress, is a system of government that has functioned for well over two centuries, even through heated partisan conflicts. A threat to the current bipartisan representation on our Elections Commission is, you know, right now it provides balance, as written in the HRS, Hawaii Revised Statutes. This allows for a robust discussion and debate, fair representation, and accountability. The Elections Commission also conducts meetings open to the public, which we appreciate. This is an opportunity for solution-focused actions. Another concern is a shift in power from bipartisan representation to partisan. HB 141 proposes to shift this power with the new recommended advice and consent of the Senate. This would give the power and authority to Democrat-majority Senate, therefore creating an imbalance on the Elections Commission. An imbalance will also diminish the voices and opinions of the minority party on the Elections Commission. Therefore, it would erode public confidence. There'd be a strong potential for imbalance in the Elections Commission, and the public will not trust the elections process. Some of the solutions and recommendations is to keep the current nomination process as written in the HRS while implementing additional transparency measures such as scheduled public hearings for nominees. This will ensure equal representation of majority and minority parties in the commission without subjecting appointments to a potentially partisan confirmation process. For these reasons, please vote no on HB 141. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Detwiler. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Ralph Kushni on Zoom. Please proceed, Mr. Kushni.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ralph Kushni. I am on the Elections Commission, and I strongly oppose HB 141 also. And for the reasons that Jamie Detwiler said, this would make the commission functionally dysfunctional, because we are going to eliminate the minority voice. My three main areas of concern are erosion of public trust. We're not addressing the real issues of the elections that we have and silencing the minority voice. So erosion of public trust, subjecting the Elections Commission appointment to Senate confirmation will completely politicize the Elections Commission. And that's probably the intent of this bill, but it should remain as it is. The real issues are that we don't even have basic things like chain of custody. We've been discussing chain of custody for a year now on the Elections Commission. The counties are not keeping chain of custody documentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Kushni, could you please focus on the bill at hand?
Yes, I am. This is why I'm discussing...
But we're not talking about chain of custody. Advice and consent of the Senate.
...opposition to this bill and the reasons for that. And we want to focus on the real issues in our elections. Chain of custody, signature verification is unaudible. It's not transparent. Ballot audits are done with ballot images, which there's no transparency there either. So please, I urge you guys to vote against this. It's going to make this completely political, and I don't think the public is going to buy into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Brett Colbus. Please proceed, Mr. Colbus.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, members of the committee. My name is Brett Colbus, 26-year Navy veteran, and I live in Eva Beach. I'm opposed to this measure. Like many in Hawaii, I've watched every election committee, Elections Commission committee, since 2021. Having commissioners fall under the advising consent rule with the Senate will be an administrative burden that will not solve the problem I believe this bill is trying to fix since the election... that will not solve the problem I believe this bill is trying to fix since the election of the current Commission chair, and it will further hinder recruitment of volunteers beyond the Commission. It is my opinion that the way to fix the, what perceived, what I perceive is the purpose of this bill, is commissioners need training. They need training on Robert's rules, they need training on the current laws, current administrative rules, they need training on the sunshine law, and how to apply it to the duties that they are required to perform as commissioners. If it's the Commission's desire to move this forward, I would recommend adding a creation of a, maybe a task force to develop an Elections Commission guidebook, similar to what you see in, on a Honolulu neighborhood board. They all get a guidebook, and they are required to take certain levels of training. With that, I yield mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, testimony in opposition from Mary Healy. Please proceed, Ms. Healy.
Hi, thank you for hearing my testimony. I oppose these changes. I think that all of you should also vote no on them. I am the public that Ralph Kushner was just talking about, and I've been going to these Elections Commission meetings for about a year, and I am losing faith in not only the elections process in Hawaii, but that you all are protecting and safeguarding our rule of law. And I really am very disappointed that this is even in session right now. It will make the Commission a partisan shell of what it's meant to do, which is address concerns of the public. And, you know, I also have the same feelings about the chain of custody issues in the state of Hawaii. I stand on my written testimony, but I would also like to remind all of you that faith in the election process and law is fundamental against societal breakdown. And we are having these issues recur over and over and over again, and for this to come to the floor is just an insult to everyone who's been working so hard and who has been participating in the process. We were asked to come and submit this testimony via written testimony or orally, and we want our voices to be heard, just like how we want our voices to be heard when we vote. And I think I speak for a lot of people who couldn't be here today, that this needs to be voted against and never be brought back to the floor. So thank you so much for hearing my testimony. I appreciate your time, and mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Mr. Billionaire in opposition. Next, we have testimony in opposition from, all I have is initials, L.C. Okay? Next is testimony in opposition from Jeric Maderos Garcia, not present. Okay, that's all the testimony that we've received, and in addition, we've received 33 testimonies in opposition, in addition to what we've already heard, and nine in support, including the Office of the County Clerk of County of Kauai, Legal Women Voters Hawaii, Democratic Party Hawaii, Hawaii State AFL-CIO. The rest are individuals. Okay. Is there anyone else here or online that wishes to testify on this measure, HB 141? If not, questions, members? Any questions? I just, well, I'll bring this up in decision-making, just explaining what the bill actually does. Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Maybe Office of Elections still here?
No, they're not here.
I guess my question would have been, is advising consent for Elections Commission common in other jurisdictions? I'll follow up. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. That is all the testimony on the bills today. Let's now move to decision-making, back to the top of the agenda, House Bill 131. I think this measure is good as is. This is the one that basically tells the Office of Information Practices to come up with uniform rules for researchers to access government information. My recommendation is to move out HB 131 as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 131. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Bellotti?
Aye.
Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Hashem? Representative Kahaloa?
Aye.
Representative Peruso?
Aye.
Representative Takayama?
Aye.
Representative Todd is excused. Representative Garcia?
Aye.
Representative Shimizu?
Aye.
Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 411, relating to Ethics Administrative Fines, establishing uniform provisions for assessment of administrative penalties under the state ethics code and lobbyist law. I think this bill is as strong as it's written. I recommend we pass this as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 411. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absences of Representatives Cochran, Hashem, and Todd.
Oh, nope. Representative Todd and Representative Hashem are here. We are voting on?
House Bill 411.
House Bill 411. Recommendation is to pass as is. You can start again.
Okay, I'm going to start again. Okay. Noting the presence of Representatives Todd and Hashem, and excused is Representative Cochran, are there any noes or reservations? Okay, hearing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next bill, House Bill 412. This basically includes certain communication with high-level government officials regarding procurement decisions as in the definition of lobbying. I would recommend we pass this out with an HD1 with merely technical amendments that are needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 412 with amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting the absence of Representative Cochran, are there any noes or reservations? Okay, recommendation adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 413, clarifies administrative oversight of statutory restrictions related to prohibited lobbyist contributions. For this, I recommend we pass this out with House Draft 1. For conformity, I recommend that we, on page 3, line 18, after the word "session of," add the word "both houses of," so that it's clear that it's both houses of the legislature need to be in session, and delete the new definition of session on page 4, line 17 to 18. That would just make it clear. And then, on page 2, line 21 to page 3, line 6, this would be better construction if we inserted under Section 97-5, since it deals with the referral of lobbyists. And the language on page 4, line 5 to 10, would be better inserted under Section 11-365, since that deals with the referral of elected officials, candidates, and candidate committees and other individuals required to file organizational reports. So these are recommendations to improve the construction of the bill itself. Then, finally, on page 4, lines 11 to 13, we want to change the word "may" to "shell," so it's clear that an illegal contribution "shell s cheat" to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund. So those are my recommendations to move it out. Oh, and then, in addition, on 413, we have the Ethics Commission amendments that I would also like to adopt that is in their testimony. Page 2, line 21, amend to read "a state lobbyist alleged to have made," et cetera. And then on page 3, lines 5 to 6, amended to read, quote, "Director to the State Ethics Commission," where we're taking out, so that, so I want to adopt the amendments as recommended in the testimony for the State Ethics Commission. So those are the recommended changes that I wish to make. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 413 with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations? Okay, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 149. Since, as we learned in testimony and discussion, that this information regarding contributions of corporations to campaign committees, candidates, and any political contributions or independent expenditures, that information is already available on the Campaign Spending Commission website. So I recommend we actually defer this measure because it's not necessary. Questions or concerns, members? If not, thank you. We'll move on. House Bill 369. This measure provides that excess contribution beyond the $100 in cash maximum that candidates can accept from a single person during an election period, that that money shall s cheat to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund, if not returned to the contributor within 30 days. And that is my, so my recommendation is that we pass this out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 369 as is. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations? Okay, hearing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, House Bill 370, relating to partial public financing of elections. On this measure, I'd like to pass out, recommend we pass out a House Draft 1 to make some technical amendments as needed for clarity, consistency, and style. And since this is moving to finance, I would like to blank out any appropriations and the positions that are in here, but I would like to include the appropriations and position count in the Standing Committee report, so it's clear to the Finance Committee what we are seeking. I would like to defect the effective date to July 1, 3,000. And the reason why we do this is so that the Finance Committee can consider it. If they like this bill, then they can pass it out as is, and it crosses over to the Senate. The goal is that if the House measure crosses and the companion Senate bill before the Senate companion bill does, then the House will control the conference draft bill and drafting. So that's why we're suggesting we do this. So, technical amendments, blank out the appropriation and positions, defect the effective date to July 1, 3,000, and include appropriation and positions in the Standing Committee report. Those are my recommendations, and also technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 370 with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations?
No vote.
Okay, and no vote from Rep. Garcia. Any additional noes or reservations? Okay, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, moving on to House Bill 371. This prohibits state and county grantees, officers and immediate family members of state or county contractors, and officers and immediate family members of state and county grantees from contributing to candidate or non-candidate committees for the duration of the contract, and additional things in here, but that's the basics. I would like to move out a measure addressing this issue because it is of critical concern to me and to the body, but I also, I also would like this committee to consider a different version of this that addresses the same issue that I had introduced with other cosponsors. Unfortunately, it didn't get a referral in time for us to have on this hearing, and I wanted to have all the Campaign Spending Commission bills in this hearing. So what I would recommend is that we defer action and decision-making on this bill until a date certain, which is February 5, when we will have a hearing on House Bill 894, which is the bill that I introduced, which was modeled after the Connecticut system to address the same issue. It's a much more comprehensive bill, more complicated, but I think it has some merit. And so I would like to have a hearing on HB 894 on the 5th of February, and then have decision-making on that bill and HB 371 at that hearing. So that way, and I've asked the Campaign Spending Commission to look at this to see if there are parts of HB 894 that we could incorporate into HB 371. So I want to defer this measure until February 5 at the JHA Committee Hearing here in this room, starting at 2:00 p.m. And I urge members to consider this bill and that bill and see what you would recommend to address the issue, because I do want to move something out this session on this, but I want to have the chance to consider the more comprehensive model that I learned from Connecticut. So that's what that bill is. So that's my recommendation to defer until February 5, HB 371. Questions or concerns, members? Nope. Okay, thank you. Okay, next. House Bill 372. On this measure, I've heard from others, and it was in the testimony, that we should delete county council members since they meet year-round in session, but why should they have to, why should they not be able to accept, solicitor accept contributions during a state legislative session? I find that compelling. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, which deletes the county council members, so this only applies to state legislators during the legislative session. So that's my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members?
Chair, I think that's a...
Representative Shimizu.
I think that's not a level application, although I understand the timing of duration of the session being year-round versus our session being a limited amount. I just feel it's unfairly applied to the state.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other questions or, yes, please, Representative Kahaloa.
Chair Tarnas, just wanted to check. You said county council members only. Does this exemption now apply to county mayors?
I, what I, thank you for that clarification. I would recommend that this only, that we remove any reference to county elected officials, which would include mayors, and council members, and prosecuting attorneys, and I guess that would be it, so that this measure would only apply to state legislators.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for making sure that I was accurate. Other questions or concerns, members? If not, my recommendation is to pass out HB 372 and an HD1 with amendments to make sure that this applies only to state legislators. Vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 372 with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations from Rep. Shimizu? Any other noes or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, House Bill 772. This measure disallows the use of campaign funds to purchase up to two tickets for an event or fundraiser held by another candidate or committee. This body, this committee and the House has, in the past, supported this measure. I would like to continue to advocate for this measure. My recommendation is to pass this out with the only amendment being a defective date, so that we can send this to Finance Committee and that they would be able to take action on it quickly. That's my recommendation. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 772 with amendments. Rep. Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 662. I am concerned that this may be unconstitutional, but I know we have a very smart attorney here with Representative Bellotti, but I would like to have the time to ask the Attorney General for advice. to have the time to ask the Attorney General for advice on this. And so, my recommendation is we defer this measure to our hearing on February 5 at 2:00 p.m. in this room for consideration at that time. In the meantime, I will follow up with the Attorney General to ask them to let us know what they think about the constitutionality of this measure. Questions or concerns, members? If not, thank you. Moving on, House Bill 134, requiring chief election officer to provide a system for electronic filing of nomination papers. I would like to move this forward with an HD1, a House Draft 1. It's going to finance, so we're going to do the standard thing of deleting the appropriations and defecting the date to July 1, 3,000. In the committee report, I want to note that the Office of Elections has recommended certain amendments, primarily starting the effective date, and I would put that into the standing committee report. There actually is no appropriations in it. So, it's just defecting the date and putting the Office of Elections recommended amendments into the committee report. That is my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 134 with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations?
No vote.
No vote from Representative Garcia. Any additional noes or reservations? Okay, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 408. This extends the deadline to register to vote by mail from 30 to 10 days prior to a primary general election. I think this is bringing the statute in line with what we've already decided in the legislature, so I think it's a reasonable bill, and I recommend we move this out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 408 as is. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations? Okay, hearing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Final bill relating to the Elections Commission, making the members of the Elections Commission subject to the advising consent of the Senate. I want to make it clear that this bill does not change the process for the representatives or senators belonging to a party different from the, it doesn't change the process for senators belonging to a party different from the president of the Senate to designate one senator to nominate two Elections Commission members. So, it retains that, so that in the Senate, this minority members would still be able to nominate two Elections Commission members. And then in the House, the minority members of the House would be able to choose one of their representatives to nominate two Elections Commission members. That will be retained in this bill. I strongly believe that we need to maintain a, you know, representation from both parties on this Elections Commission. So, I appreciate the concerns of those who are opposing it, that this would somehow change that, but in fact, the bill does not change that. What it does is that those people who are nominated would then, both Republicans and Democrats, would then go to, through the process of advising consent in the Senate, which is basically a public vetting process where, and it's transparent, open to the public, and people would, and the public would be able to provide testimony as well. So, it really still would retain the bipartisan nature of this Elections Commission, which I think is important. So, with that said, my recommendation is to pass this bill with technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. I would also like to amend this because it's not clear in the bill what would happen if a vacancy occurs during the interim. So, I want to make it clear that instead of the Senate having to convene a special session to appoint the new member, that we would say that the Chief Justice could appoint the person nominated for the Elections Commission during the interim. So, it would just be covered that way, so that we wouldn't have to come into special session, because I'm trying to reduce the potential objections from the Senate. But, so that's my intention. And, as I said, technical amendments. This would go to the Senate. They're the ones that do the advising consent. They can decide if they want to do this, but I think it's a good idea worth considering, while we are retaining the bipartisan nature of this Elections Commission. That's my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members?
Just comment. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification about the nomination still being preserved per partisanship, because I didn't actually quite understand that. So, that was a really good explanation. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Other comments or concerns? Representative Garcia.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it does retain the fact that both minority and majority still appoints two members equally. However, they are now subject to the advising consent of the Senate, which is controlled by one party. There's one senator on that committee that will go through their confirmation hearing. There's three minority members on the floor. So, the power in charge would, in essence, have veto power over the minority's appointments to the Elections Commission. They could reject those of, say, for example, we appoint two people on there, they go through their confirmation hearing, the majority in the Senate can, through votes, reject our appointments. Therefore, it's not equally bipartisan, and it's still subject to the consent of the majority in power.
Thank you very much for that statement, and I, my understanding is that if the candidates, the nominees are rejected, it will go back through the process again.
Right, which can take a long time, and that would leave two vacant positions on the Elections Commission, which is still subject to the majority in control. As minority members, I believe, and it's my opinion, that we should have the right to appoint anybody to that commission, therefore, it is equally bipartisan. So, therefore, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, my best understanding is that we would still go back through that process again. I appreciate your concern, though, that it would take a while. It would take time, and we don't want to have any vacancies over extended time. Thank you for that comment. Any other comments or concerns on this measure?
Chair?
Yes, Representative Shimizu.
I share the same concern as Representative Garcia, and I'm wondering, as it is in place now, is there an improvement by passing this bill and having the Senate confirm?
I believe so, yes.
In what way? If I could get an explanation, please?
As I mentioned, advising consent of the Senate would provide an opportunity for the public to actually listen to the testimony. They would be able to provide testimony. They would review the nominees, and that the public could actually participate in this, whereas right now they cannot. So, it's another way of public transparency and accountability, but my intention is to maintain the bipartisan nature of the commission.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns, members? If not, recommendation to pass out an HD1, technical amendments, and the amendments that I've just described. Vice chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 141 with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any noes or reservations?
No vote.
No vote from Representative Garcia?
No vote.
No vote from Representative Shimizu. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members. We have no further business before the committee date, and therefore, we are adjourned.